Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting into order and would everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and with that, sir, we, um, first thing I guess I'd like to ask is to ask for approval of agenda. Are there any additions or corrections that you guys need to make?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, guys, second. Motion's made by Josh, second by I reckon to approve the agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motions carried. Then there's no closed session and no unfinished business. And with that, we'll move on to number six, the public hearing. And Andy, I'm gonna ask you to get the podium.
Thank you. And good evening, everyone. I'm Andy Carey with Poltern and Mick, an engineer on the improvement project here in town. And welcome here tonight for the hearing on proposed assessment. Remember back in December of last year, we had the hearing on improvement when we first introduced the project. So you have the general location of work, scope of work. Talked a little bit about some of the things to expect during the project, the disruption of access to your property while they're putting in the underground work. I think we talked a little bit about temporary mailboxes for mail delivery and working with each other on garbage collection, those sorts of things. I think we also talked a little bit about dust control and dust during construction. Well, that's one thing that really didn't happen too much, was any dust issues. So it was really more mud issues and that had a little bit of an impact on the completion of the work. And everyone who lives out there already knows about it, but we'll talk about it a little bit more here, too. So with the improvement area in the northwest part of town, well, I think everybody knows the project area with the northwest area and then the alley just west of here. And then we did some storm sewer work also in the northeast quarter of town. With the storm sewer, I showed this as part of the project, but there actually isn't any assessments for storm sewer, so none of the folks in this area are actually, could actually get to the meeting tonight. And then we had some wet weather impacts. The goal was to have the, all of the concrete work done, the curb and gutter and the driveway sidewalk work, to have that all completed. And the first lift of the Batuminous blacktop placed also. With the wet weather that we had this summer, we didn't get as much done. Contractor didn't get as much done as they wanted to or as we wanted them to. So there's a few areas, and they're highlighted there in red, where the curb and gutter hasn't been completed yet and the Batuminous pavement hasn't been completed yet either. So those areas are gonna remain as gravel surface during the winter. If there's some touch-up that needs to be done in order to keep good access, anything like that during the winter, you just need to give City Hall a call and we'll get with the contractor and try to make some provisions. In the spring, I'm anticipating there'll be a few potholes or wet areas, those sorts of things, but that should pass pretty quick. There isn't a lot of need for, at least in the residential area, there isn't a lot of need for any trucks or anything up there, so that should be pretty good. In the alley, that already has a heavy gravel section on it, through the extra gravel on there also to carry us over the winter, so I think things should be, should be good there also. In the spring of next year, in May of next year, I anticipate then, well, I anticipate the contractor will be back and the concrete work will be done, the Batuminous work in that area will be completed, the turf restoration, boulevard restoration, all of that stuff will be completed. And then ultimately, the final lift of blacktop, Batuminous pavement will be put on. So with the assessment role right now, with the assessment role in those areas where the concrete work is done, we physically have gone out and measured on the driveway, driveway apron, driveway pavement, how many square yards there are of driveway pavement, if there was some sidewalk, we physically have measured that. In the area that hasn't been completed yet, those measurements haven't been made, but we based all of the assessments that are on the assessment role based on what was pre-existing, okay, and replicated that. If for some reason there's less concrete work done, and I'm really talking driveway and sidewalk, if there's less done than what we had listed in the assessment role, we'd come back and make that adjustment. We wouldn't charge you for some work that wasn't, we don't take the council's intent to charge for work that wasn't done. So there would be some adjustments made there if needed. Curb and gutter, though, that's based on your front block width, so that's not gonna change. It's really just any of the extra, extra concrete work that would have an impact here. So when we look at the, at the cost for the improvements, the street improvements, and that includes the boulevard restoration, that sort of work, cost there, 1.26 million dollars with the sanitary sewer and services, about $471,000, water main and services, about $423,000, storm sewer, about $424,000, for that total estimated project cost of about $2,580,000. When you look at the assessment policy, and a little history on that assessment policy, that wasn't agreed for this, for this project. This is something that previous councils had, had put together years ago with the goal being to try to be consistent, or not try to be, the goal to be consistent from project to project with the residents of the community, so that everybody is, is treated equitably throughout the years. And with the assessment policy, most of these items have a cost share between the city and the benefiting property owners. So for reconstructing a street surface along with the curb and gutter, the assessment rate on a front lot, which is the postal address for the lot, that's the definition of a front lot, is the postal address, okay. Seventy-five percent of that project cost is paid by the city and 25 percent of that project cost is paid by the property owner. If you're a side lot, so this would only apply if you're, you have a corner lot. On the side lot, there's a 50 percent reduction where 87 and a half percent of the project cost is paid by the community and 12 and a half percent of that project cost is assessed to the benefiting properties. With service walk and driveways, 50 percent of that project cost is paid by the, is paid by the city and the other 50 percent is assessed to benefiting property owners. With new curb and gutter, is assessed at 100 percent of the project cost. And we only have one spot in town here where there was, there was new curb and gutter, and that's in the alley. And in the alley with the assessment rate, actually, there's a little bit of a deviation from this. In the alley, there's curb and gutter on one side only, okay, in order to match in better with the existing slopes that were there. Watersheds from one side of the alley to the other, to the, to the curb line, and then the curb line takes the water to the new catch basins. Instead of assessing that new curb and gutter 100 percent to one side, it was assessed 50 percent to both sides. So in essence, both sides of the alley share that curb and gutter and share that assessment. So there is a little deviation here because there was curb and gutter only on one side of the alley. Instead of 100 percent to one side, it was 50 percent to both sides of the alley. New concrete driveway, again, new concrete driveway, not reconstruction, is 100 percent the property owner's responsibility. The city pays 100 percent of all storm sewer, sewer cost with the sanitary sewer and, oh, it says water mains. Yeah, sanitary sewer and water mains, 100 percent of that project cost is paid by the utility and none of it is actually assessed. On the sanitary sewer and water services, 100 percent of that project cost is, is assessed against the benefiting properties and the utility doesn't pay anything for that. When we look at what the assessment rates are for the heavy-duty street, and really, there's only one area here that has that heavy-duty street, and that's right in front of, in essence, in front of Casey's. With the extra, with the truck traffic that goes into the business there, the rate there was, or the pavement section was, was increased. And now with that heavy street section, it really only applies to the Casey property because they're the ones benefiting from residential properties, don't pay a higher rate for heavy-duty street surface, okay? Only the, only the business there. With the assessment there, the actual rate is, and this is all based on ASBID prices, okay? Back in December of last year, when we met, we estimated prices based on previous bids, that, to come up with estimated assessment grades. The numbers that we have right here are based on actual contractor bid numbers, okay? So with the heavy street surface on the, on the front lot, $42.16 per linear foot on the front, and half of that, $12, $21.08 a linear foot on the side lot. Looking back at what we had estimated back in December of last year, it actually came out to be higher. It's about $5 a foot more than what we thought it was gonna be. On the alley, and the alley is an 18-foot wide alley, and 25 percent of that project cost is being assessed, which equates to $18.58 per linear foot, which is actually less, about $5 less, $4 less than what we had estimated last year. So that's a good thing. But one of the things that you'll see as we go through this is there's some variation that happens here. And so on residential streets, on Third Street Northwest and First Avenue Northwest, that's a 36-foot wide roadway. And again, with the front and the side lot assessments, the front is $29.75 per linear foot and $14.88 on the side lot. And that's a little bit less than what we thought it was gonna be back in December. On the, on First Street Northwest, that's a wider street, 38 and a half feet. That's the same width as that heavy-duty street that we talked about first. The assessment there is $31.90 on the per linear foot of block frontage on the front. And on the side lot, half of that, $15.95. And that's pretty close to what we had estimated back in December. With some more streets, on First Street Northwest and Second Avenue Northwest, that's a 34-foot wide roadway there on the front lot. The assessment rate is $28.03 per linear foot. On the side lot, $14.02 per linear foot. So a little bit less than anticipated back in December. On curb and gutter with the drive-over curb, and that's the new curb, and this is the curb that was installed in the alley, okay? So instead of that 100 percent assessment, it was reduced to 50 percent and goes to both sides of the, both sides of the alley. Assessment rate for that is $7.46 per linear foot. And again, that's based on the actual contractor bid number. On the curb and gutter, to reconstruct on a front lot, so that's that 25 percent of the project cost, $4.87 per linear foot. On the side lot, half of that, $2.44 per linear foot for the curb and gutter. On driveway, new concrete driveway pavement, and this is new, hasn't been there before, $63.16 is the assessment per square yard, and that's 100 percent of the project cost. To reconstruct concrete driveway, it's based on a 50 percent of the project cost, and that turns out to be $34.80 per square yard. Now, if you look at those two numbers and you say, hey, wait a minute, it's that new concrete and the reconstructed concrete, it's not, it's not half of, half of the other. Reason for that is on reconstructed concrete curb and gutter, the removal of the existing concrete pavement is included in there also. Okay, so it has a little higher project cost than new driveway pavement that didn't have any removals included. So that's why that number is different. On new Batuminous driveway, 100 percent of that project cost is assessed, $33.26 per square yard. And on reconstructed, reconstructed Batuminous driveway, it's a 50 percent assessment rate at $16.63 per square yard. On this one, there isn't a, we don't actually have a bid item for remove the Batuminous driveway pavement. That's why you see in this situation, there isn't any added cost for removal. That's really kind of incidental to the rest of the project. That's why you see that this is a true 50 percent reduction. When we look at those, those assessment rates on the, if we could go back, on most all of these items here, I think the actual assessment is a little less than what we had anticipated. We were thinking that curb and gutter would be about $5. It turned out to be $4.87 per linear foot. With the, with the reconstructed concrete driveway pavement, we were thinking about $35 a square yard last December, and it came in just a little bit less, $34.80 per square, per square yard. And on the, on the Batuminous driveway, we were thinking back in December about $17 a square yard. Came up close, but a little less, at $16.63 per square yard. Service walk is 50 percent of that project cost is assessed, and the assessment rate turns out to be $4.68. Back in December, we were thinking that that cost was gonna be closer to $6 per square foot. So nice to see that coming a little bit less. Sanitary sewer service, again, 100 percent of that cost is assessed. $1,506.77 is the actual assessment rate, and we were thinking, guessing $1,500 back in December of last year. On the water service, 100 percent of that cost is assessed. This is the one that changed quite a bit. And again, of these, these assessment rates are based on the numbers that the contractor bid, okay? Here with the water service, that assessment rate is $2,492.50 for each service. And based on historic bids, that number is, has historically been closer to about $1,600. So it's almost $900 more than we typically see. Again, it's based on what the contractor's actual bid amounts were. And the sump pump at $341.71 for each sump pump connection. On the assessments themselves, the interest rate for the assessments is 4.44 percent. I think that's a pasting from this, from the interest rate that the city has on the...
1 percent over.
Okay, a little bit more than what the, the city has on their bond. And the city does have administrative costs going through that 15-year term, so that 1 percent helps to, helps to cover that. The term or the number of payments is gonna, is gonna go over 15 years. Principal payments on the assessments are equal each year, okay? So it's not, it's, it's not like a mortgage where every, every year it's the same here. The principal payments are the same and the interest or payments then obviously go down every year as the principal goes down. Your assessments are due twice a year and they're actually paid to the county in conjunction with your property taxes. So that'll actually show up on your property tax statement what the assessment is. You'll pay it to the county and then the county will collect it and then they, they forward that back on to the, to the city. On the assessments, they can be prepaid if you would so choose to do that. And I think you can actually prepay those at any time during the course of the assessment. The big thing to remember there is to come to City Hall before Halloween and get that organized with the city so they know about it ahead of time. Once, right around November 15th, every year, the assessments are recertified to the, to the county and once the county has it on their records, the city can't take it off. So if you came in on January 1st and paid off your assessment, you're still gonna have that assessment on your property taxes and you're still gonna have to pay that.
So why do they have to be paid by, huh? So why do they have to be paid by?
If you wanna prepay something before Halloween, just remember before Halloween.
Next year. You can prepay this year.
Prepay, yep. And you can prepay, you can prepay now.
This year initially, it'll go to December 31st to prepay without incurring any interest penalties.
Till 2018?
Yes.
So you're telling me, so I will get interest if I run until next Halloween or what?
Yes, if you wait till next Halloween, there'll be some...
So I should just pay it now and get it over with and then I won't have to worry about it or...
If you have the means to do so, that's recommended to avoid interest.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to do. I'm not gonna give somebody 4.5 percent, you know?
Yes. And I say, I say Halloween, if it's, if it's a year or more down the road, come, come talk with, with the city administrator, with Nicholas here, and let him know that that's what your intent is and make that arrangement so he knows about it. Because November 1st isn't a magic drop dead date or anything like that, but it needs to be coordinated by law then, so it doesn't slip through the cracks. Because once it's back to the county again, it's gonna show taxes on your tax statement and the city cannot take it off. Nope. Okay, once it's there, it's there.
Actually, it didn't get done, so I should push it off another year.
Yeah, and maybe visit a little bit about that also on the protocols that the city has done in the past here for, for, for the assessments is they've chosen, they've chosen to assess the, or go through the assessment process in the first year of construction and wait till the second year to do the final lift of blacktop and if there's some boulevard work that needs to be done, that kind of stuff. So they actually do the assessment before the project is, is closed out. And the, and the reason for that is this interest, because the city has already sold a bond to pay for this. The city can't enter into a contract, into an agreement with a contractor to construct this without having the resources to do that. So last spring, the city sold bonds in order to, they borrowed money, sold bonds, borrowed money. That's, that's what they did, is borrowed money to pay for the, to pay for the project. If they hold off on the assessments for another year, it's another year of interest, that actually just gets passed through. So if you don't start paying it now, that's an option, but all it does is increases your assessment because there's more interest, interest to pay, okay? So that's, and you know something, I'm, I'm, wasn't here when the assessment policy was put together years ago, but I assume that came about based on discussions between the council and the people that were being assessed, that, you know, it's really a question back, would you rather pay, be forced into another year of, of interest, paying more interest and then still have another 15 years? Or you wanna just get started paying on it when the work is substantially done? So I think that's the, that's the history there and I'm thinking that it actually was a negotiation between the people being assessed and the, and the council as to how that, how that was set up. Because the reason for it, there's a good reason for it. It takes away one year of interest, okay, on that full bond amount. Okay, so it is a nice value to everybody in doing that. I think before we go to any questions from the audience, I think there's a couple of adjustments. Nicholas, if you want to touch base on, pronounce those.
Initially, there are two adjustments I'll be recommending to council that be made. The first is going to be for Dolores Blake, parcel ID 310436200. She has an assessment for a concrete driveway in the amount of $1,499.88. She contacted me and she would like to have a local contractor complete that concrete work since they were the original contractor who did the entire driveway in the first place. And instead of her paying the project, she would pay that local contractor directly. So the contractor who's as part of this project wouldn't be doing that work. So I'd recommend removal of that since she'll be paying that bill directly. The other one I have is for Chad and Carrie Klogas, parcel ID 300196500. And they have two sump services listed in the assessment. The sump services come with sump box, tees, lines, everything. This one, however, because of how deep underground it is, can't get a sump box associated with it, so it's just a tee portion of it. So there would be justification in adjusting that down from two full services down to one because there is, they don't get the materials associated with that.
Thank you. I guess one thing to talk about here a little bit also is with the, obviously, there's recognition with the gravel roads, there's, there's concrete work to be done next year, curb and gutter, driveway pavement, there's some sidewalk, and the Batuminous pavement, there's boulevard work to be done. With the, with the boulevard work that has been completed, it's been seeded, but the expectation is there'll probably be a little settlement over the winter. There'll be some more town soil work that's gonna be needed in order to do some leveling and there'll be some reseeding, overseeding done next spring also. Once the city does make final payment on the, on the project, which is probably gonna be July, August, sometime around there, next summer, once final payment is authorized, that begins a two-year warranty period. So any defects in materials or workmanship that are, that are discovered within that two-year period need to be corrected by the, by the contractor. So that's one of the things, before that two-year period expires, city staff will go through, look and review the project and if they know anything, they get it on the list, get it to the contractor to get it, get it resolved. If you notice something during that period, you need to call City Hall so they can get it onto their list so that it doesn't get, get missed later on and not included. Again, though, it has to be a defect in materials or workmanship, okay? Just because concrete cracked doesn't mean it was a defect in materials or workmanship. If it cracked because there was a trench settlement, okay, that's a warranty item. If it's up in an area where no excavation work was done and it just ended up cracking, sometimes that's just mother nature in Minnesota and differential frost movement and those sort of things with concrete cracks. There are some things there that do happen, though, make sure that you let City Hall know, okay? Does the council have any, anything before we wrap it up to the public comment? The protocols, they come up to the podium here or do you talk from? So if there's any questions, anything that you wanna ask me or ask the council, if you wanna come up to the podium, you're invited to use it.
What about replacement of sprinkling yet?
Okay, replacement of sprinkling, yes. Well, we'll have to get something done there. That's a little bit of a tricky item with, with the city. Are we paying for that, the city?
I believe that we had discussed, we, they should've gotten out to the property owners, had the, had your landscaper locate them so we could get those moved out of the way in time for the project. So it was up to the property owner to have those moved. If something, if they were moved and the contractor hit them anyway, then that could be considered a covered item. But if, if the contractor was never told they were there, then there's no way for them to have known to avoid them.
Yeah, that's the tough part there because they aren't included under go for one call when you, when you call for underdirt. Okay, so they're gonna...
I did have a long mark.
Sir, what's your, what's your address so I can make sure I follow up on that?
15, first street.
15? And I'm making the assumption that they can wait till spring to get something around. We're, we're done sprinkling for this year.
Hey guys, I have a question for you. The sump service, so that is strictly the box, is that correct?
Right. It doesn't make a connection to your hose. It provides the, the box for you to connect it to.
Okay. Can I get mine removed as well? Do you want me to start the agents' pipe line? I don't need a box for it.
What are you gonna connect it into?
I have a hose coming out and right now, they got duct taped into the PVC pipe that's in the street.
Okay. And that's because they didn't get the box installed here. The purpose of that box is we don't want you, we don't want you outletting your sump pumps onto the building.
It's in gold, just like it is right now. It's gonna go right into that curb.
You got a stump sticking up there, right? And that's where they put them.
That'll need a clean out because it's strictly my sump pump.
Okay, so all you, you're saying, don't put the box in, just put the...
I don't need to spend $340 bucks.
Okay, so it wouldn't go to zero because there's still a Y and riser pipe are still there, right?
I have duct tape, it's fine, it's gonna be.
We, we actually don't have prices for that, so if, so if I wanted to do it, I can't even tell you. It isn't, it's bid as one unit, so that installation, the tee, the riser pipe, the box and the installation of all of that is just one bid item. I think it's not separate, so I'd have to go back to the contractor just to ask him what kind of credit they'll give.
Yeah, we don't know because it was, like you said, just the one bid item for that entire...
Some of those projects, like in front of ours, isn't done yet. So some of this changing, we should be able to do come spring, right?
Yeah, if you don't...
Like the driveways and some of that, because you're kind of a little bit outrageous with your, with your concrete work. So being our street isn't done... So being our street isn't done yet, you know, it's not enough, we should be able to do some of this changing in this spring, right?
Yeah, it's going to show up on the first year's assessment though. So that adjustment, if there's some credits adjustments, they'll, they'll be made in the future assessment, future year's assessment.
In 2020.
It'll, it'll be the full, whatever is on the roll now, but if there's a correction it'll show up in the future years, it'll be adjusted for that. Yep.
But we can still do that because.
Yeah, and we need to, we need to be able to do that because the coverage might change.
Things aren't done there yet. And I was told too out in front of our place, well, two weeks ago, about three weeks ago, they came and all of a sudden they were going to tear some more of my driveway out. And I, I says, well, why this change now? Well, Boltman Mink told me that, well, the road's going to be lowered three to six inches. And I said, I was told this road was going to stay the same height because where they, where they cut my driveway the first time was going to be ample, fine with the curb fitting in there. Now all of a sudden they had to cut it back further yet just because they lowered that road. Now I'm going to have a big.
Okay. Sure, I don't, I don't know where you live.
Two hundred First Avenue Northwest. And I don't know why, why they need to do lower. And, you know, like our lawns now, everybody's lawn was nice and parallel with the curb before. Well, now our lawns are going to come and drop down.
Yeah. I know that the, the street, and I, I don't know specifically where you're at, but I know that, I know that on First Avenue, that street was extremely flat. We put in some catch bases and we would have made adjustments to try to improve the slope or to get more slope on the curb to get the water to the catch bases. Minimize the probability of.
Usually what happens when they drop the road, somebody's saving some money because that can be filled in with material. Either Boltman Mink or M and R is saving some gravel cost or something. I've been, I've been, I've been in the road construction business for a while, so I know where they cut corners and where to go.
Well, and I don't think that's, that's happened, I think the reason that there's an adjustment, it's for drainage, because I, I know that, that Second, Second Street Northwest, First Avenue intersection, there was really poor drainage in the past there. We did some, some catch basin work there actually, worked with a neighboring farmer and he was gracious enough to, to give us an easement so we could get a new storm sewer outlet to get rid of that water. So I think that's what it is. With, with, excuse me, you know, I'm, from a contractor's perspective, they actually get paid unit prices of work, so it doesn't make it like the old days, if they do less, if they haul in less gravel, they pay less. It's all based on unit price of work, so I, I think the reason there is, is just trying to make some drainage improvements on the street as well.
Why did they go back so far on our driveways? I'm on First Street. I mean, you guys, you know, I don't, I don't understand why we went back 20 feet and cut it on my, on my driveways, both of them.
Yeah, in a specific way, I can't, I couldn't tell you that.
Well, could you find that out?
Sure.
I'm just, I'm just wondering why they went back so far on it.
First, did they go to a joint?
Nope. They went past first joint and that second one, didn't they?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, I can't, tonight I can't.
Well.
I'll go to your place, I'll have to.
Why, why it went back so far, I don't understand.
What's your address, sir?
Seventeen First Street Northwest.
So are we blaming this for not getting complete because of the rain strictly? This is my question.
Well, essentially.
I don't know. When they first started the project, there was five guys that were working for the longest time on their street. And you could tell then that this project wasn't going to be done. And so I'd look at the city and go, is there any withholdings? You know, we can withhold money because a project didn't get done. Yeah, there was quite a bearing, but they have five guys working on this big project.
We, we came to a point where, you know, watching weather reports and the like included that it's, it's just time to, time to quit. Because once the curb, once the concrete curb is in, in your committed.
I get that, I get this time of year. My question is at the beginning of this project.
Why it took so long?
Why, why they have five, they have five guys working litter. Now it increased towards the end, but that's because they got pushed.
There were 12 blocks that were supposed to be done and already it took almost a month just to complete that street you were on. I've been with some construction people, they said it was because of the subsoil and stuff, there happened to problems, extremely wet stuff. I would think at that point, already knowing the scope of the project, what it said, you know what, maybe we need to have other people come in and do something to complete this project on time. Back to what Ross said before, I don't know, there are a number of projects that are done and there's usually penalty if the projects aren't completed on time. And I guess that was a question I had, is there a penalty if they didn't complete something like that set up ahead of time? And if not, that should be something that's done in the future.
Yeah.
So that.
Yeah, and there, there, there are penalties included in, in the contract that, the contractor has made a request for time extension because of the wet weather conditions that they experienced during the course of the work. And one of them is the rain, but you already know the, the soft subgrades, most of the streets ended up, we ended up subcutting most of those because of the poor stability. It wasn't the fact, the fact that we couldn't get compaction. With the, with the streets, you look at two things. One is compaction, the whole thing with compaction is minimizing the potential for, for settlement. But the other is stability and stability is really related to moisture. Stability, it's a pretty simple test, they run a loaded truck over it and monitor how deep attracts it leaves in the, in the subgrade. At least more than a quarter inch and a half. You know, then we start bringing in the geotechnical specialists, they give us some recommendations on what to do and most, all the streets end up in pretty dark soils, a little bit different than what we've experienced in the past. But I'm not trying to make excuses for the contractor, just trying to help everyone understand that it was tough working this summer. But we did, we did, discussions with the contractor, make the same conclusion that they were, I think on the, you later did that, that, that it was time to, to quit and not put us into a position where we got concrete curb down and terrible weather, we aren't, we're going to have to compromise the batuminous work. But on your, on the original comments, on liquidated damages, that's something that the council hasn't addressed with the contractor yet.
To the original question about the three weeks of rain, I regularly drove the project. If we hadn't, if we hadn't had those three weeks of rain, it'll be blacktop right now. The days that it rained, especially after those first two weeks and they had like one big rain, there'd be four days, it picked the absolute worst day possible to rain. If you found the, just the wrong day for construction to rain, it did it. And engineer, city staff and contractors, we meet on a weekly basis, every Wednesday to discuss what work has been done, what's the planned work, issues we're seeing, all of that. And that's something we would talk about numerous times is it would rain on a late Monday to Tuesday and it'd be 48 degree weather and nothing would dry out for the rest of the week, so the rest of the work we absolutely shocked because of it. Whereas maybe it was on a Thursday or Friday, you might have the weekend to get that dried up so they come back on Monday, they can get rolling on it. And it really just, those three weeks of rain really set it back, it really did.
Are there some other questions?
It seemed like though, in those kind of situations, they still never, they still sent a handful of staff to work on it. There was never a push to, all right, we're behind, let's get more guys here to work on it.
How many Saturdays did they work?
One.
Two?
I know about two of them.
Two of them only worked two weeks.
Right. Yeah. I mean, if you're behind, you bring more people in to get the job done.
Or I think as a council, you look at your deadlines and say, all right, we want to start these projects in May. Let's not start these projects in July, August, wherever it would end up being. Let's be first on this one. It seems like all of our projects are always late in year. Who we got?
The streets were milled the last couple of days in June.
Except.
It took them two months to get the blocks.
And they wanted to start ours October 10th and thought they were going to get it done in the mud.
Yeah, I was without a driveway for four weeks.
Four weeks, that wasn't so bad.
Looking at our current road right now, you talked a lot, and I'm not a real person on these, but I can tell the difference between gravel and sand. And our road is, there isn't much rock. And we already seen it how sloppy it was. Is there any way we can get more rock? It's probably too late now, but it is going to be, it's going to be sloppy. There isn't much rock. We'll have to address fire driveways.
The quality of gravel they have is just terrible. It's sloppy.
Meetmen, that's recorded, once I can tell you that question.
Boy, you must have a big window. We need some granite or something on there, some granite or something, at least down the middle for somebody to drive one. Spring, it's going to be terrible. There'll be people getting stuck in there.
Exactly.
In a couple of days here, it's going to be ugly. Thursday afternoon, take a trip through there. It's going to get greasy.
Is there something we can do with that? Because I know that I would be very unhappy with that if I'm driving through mud. You know, I think, I think we need to address that. We do. There's mud and that's what they have to drive through.
Depending what the rest of the fall brings and even the spring, we don't know how weather next spring, that's going to have to be something the city has to monitor. Maybe some overtime additional gravel has to be done. We either have to walk three days, you know, or something like that. Because I know you said you're coming back in May, but if it's wet, it won't be till June, it won't get done till July somehow. If you're lucky.
And I think that's the real solution in this. We're getting to the point now where it's going to start freezing up. So once it freezes, it's going to be as good as any asphalt street. I mean, for hardness, we're talking here. The real problem's going to be spring. Like that's what we're all fearing is when frost comes out, turns it all to mush and somebody tries to get in and even in four wheel, they're just, they're just spinning. At that point, I think that's where we need to work with the contractor to make sure that they're coming in, we see soft spots that are forming, they're getting in with fresh gravel, trying to get that as firmed up as best as possible.
Nick, I think we need to work with them now so that we're on the top of the subject that happens in the spring.
And we have talked about that at the weekly construction meetings, like we know springtime is going to be bad.
We can go back on the timeline that the people weren't there, weren't working, didn't bring extra people in. We, we can't do anything about the past. But I think we all see now that.
Well, you can look at all, there's penalties.
Well, we can look at that too, but as far as all these other things, we can go back, okay? But we can try to make it better now in the spring. We know that the roads aren't going to be the best, so we can work with everyone and see if we can make it, so you're not going to get stuck in the road.
Agreed.
And I think that's something that you deserve and we need to do.
The other thing to do is to look at the future when you do projects like this in the future is to look at the scope of that project and learn from what happened on this one, that it didn't get done and what's a backup plan.
Right.
And maybe not to mill all 12 streets, maybe mill half of that, three or four for the idea that we might not get it.
Right. And we've been fortunate on the other projects that we've done, you know, they got done and we didn't have this before. We didn't have the weather, but now, as you write, we can learn from this.
Throughout the project, the city does keep retainage. Towards the end of the project, I believe it's 5% retainage we keep off of every pay application. So in the end, we will have kept 5% and we use that to make sure everything is taken care of. It's built up to snuff, punch list items are taken care of so they don't just finish and walk out of town and never look back. So we do keep 5%.
So we get that back then?
Not that we don't get it back, but that's.
You don't pay it, but, okay, so then we.
At the end of the project.
We pay it.
We don't pay it until every, everything is.
Yeah, I get that.
Yep.
But we're going to start paying.
Yep. And like you had mentioned, that's.
We don't even know what our amount is.
Right. Well, if we need to make adjustments, we will. But as Andy said, the, the reason for doing that, even though we don't have final quantities, is because on the bond part of it, you would be charged, we would, the city would have to pay interest on capitalized interest, which just means more cost to the entire project overall. So by starting it a year early, we avoid paying interest on capitalized interest, which brings down the cost of the entire thing.
I got one more question, sanitary sewer service and water service, even if they're not hooked up, you still get charged?
There were a few services put into vacant lots that are not hooked up at this time and those actually don't show up. They show up that one was constructed there, but they don't show up as an assessment. The city's intent is to collect that when the service is used as a water connection to be, a sewer connection to be.
We keep record of that, so if you have a blank lot and it gets a water and sewer connection, the assessment isn't activated right away. We'll keep that, record of that and somebody builds a house on it, then the assessment is activated.
What if there is a house there and they just stuck it in? They didn't hook it up to the existing?
It should have been hooked up. Oh, we'll have to, we'll have to check into what specific property that is to see what the situation is.
I have one question, question. With the payments, it's to me. I would like to start paying generally, but can I pay that every month?
It goes with your property taxes.
So I have to pay the 15 million?
Yeah, it, it goes on the property taxes.
So if I want to pay it all, I just pay it all so I don't have to pay the taxes?
Yep, but you have to do that by the end of the year.
Before the end of the year.
End of this year.
End of this year.
End of this year. Yep. If you pay it all, then no interest is charged. After the start of the year, then interest is charged.
Council members, is there any break?
I just got. I got to get my money back.
I got assessed $4,800 on First Avenue, I got a corner lot. Now even in First Street, I see like some of this is half and half, zero. They got to do it all in the same year or? Because they did First, was it First Avenue, what, when did they do that last? Two years ago?
And you were on a corner lot?
Yeah, they did First Avenue, now I got hit with First Street and I see like a lot of these people that are on corners now, they only get half of one street or the other.
You're only getting the full amount on your?
On the street.
Your main street, whatever.
Whatever your address is. Whatever your address is would have been.
I think what he's saying is you're on a corner where it was one project, one time, one project, another time.
Yeah, within, in the last two years or whatever.
And now you want us to look at, are you getting double lammied?
Yeah.
For both sides is what you're getting at.
Well, I, I know I didn't get charged for the hookups on First Street, but I get on First Avenue.
And that would depend on which way your services run.
Yeah, my, my services are on First Avenue.
But street frontage, we could take a look at that because if it's a corner lot, there may be an adjustment.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying because I just got, it was less than, well, two years ago? Two years ago.
But on that one, you would have just been assessed 50%. On that one, you would have just been assessed 50%.
But I got, I got assessed a full, but that all has to be done in the same year or what?
We can double check on that.
Because I, it was less than, well, two years ago is when they did it. And basically I got assessed $5,000 there and now I'm getting assessed up for this street.
Hey, if you give Andy your street address, we can take a look at that property to see what exactly happened.
Seventeen First Street. Because when you did First Avenue, you came from, what is that, Park Street?
Park Street, yes.
You came from Park Street, you only went like a block and a half and you quit like that, right by my house. Two years ago, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
So at this point then, if the council wanted to close the hearing and then you approved the assessment role with your adjustments.
So at this point then, if the council wanted to close the hearing, and then you approve the assessment role with your agents.
I never close in the open the hearing, because Nick said he didn't have to do it, so. Okay, now, no more questions, everyone?
I got one question.
Okay.
I'll kinda work this out. Once he checks things out, I, I, I'm gonna pay this off before the end of the year, so.
Yep.
We gotta get this straightened out, and then, you wanna call me, or should I call you, or what?
After the meeting, let's get, anybody who has questions, let's get names and numbers.
Well, how long is this gonna take? I, I have, I have a two-hour drive yet. Pardon me.
After we close the public hearing, grab numbers from people on those property addresses.
I, I have the addresses here, so I'll just get back to you on whether-
What phone numbers to get back to?
Oh, okay.
So once we close the public hearing, I, I assume most of you aren't gonna stay around for all the fun and excitement that is a city council meeting afterward. So we'll have like a five-minute break for people to clear out. Give Andy your phone number so that we can get in contact if he can get it sorted out. Because we do wanna make sure this all gets taken care of.
Yeah, I, I, because I'm not gonna pay the interest.
I agree with you wholeheartedly.
And I, I just wanna make sure I get double whammy for the-
Yep.
Oh, I don't believe you have to be for an affirmative.
Same, me too. Same, me too.
I'm asking for Jim here.
I'm older than you are.
Yeah, right.
Thank you for keeping us abreast of the situation with the information on paper, and also you came around personally. The workers did that a number of times, I appreciate that. One thing though, for the city, in the spring, when we talked about the possible assessment costs and stuff like that, when I got that letter, it was sticker shot, because in the spring, I was thinking curb and gutter, replacement of driveway, and kinda doing the math, and I had this thinking about $4,000 or $5,000. And when that came, obviously, it was double that, and I'm wondering if I missed something in the spring. So, again, in future projects, when you do this, make sure you have estimates, you make sure you cover that thoroughly. Make sure someone wants to sell their house before you fix their road or something, I don't know. But that way, it would take away some of that sticker shot. You know, like the water hookup and the sewer hookup, you know, I'm thinking most of that's on the street. I'm not gonna get that much of an assessment with that, but that was half of the bill, was just for the water hookup and sewer hookup. So maybe just make sure people are aware of those things and more prepared.
Thank you.
Okay, when I built the house in 82, it was supposed to be a $75 lifetime hookup charge for sanitary sewage. Well, that lasted for, till 2011, which was 28 years. And I expected sometime it would increase, but anyway, for the first 28 years, it cost me $2.67 a year. Now they go on a monthly charge, which is $32, which amounts to $384 a year, which is 14,382% increase since 2010. Then you add that $1,506, that makes it a 70,815% increase. I think this is getting a little steep.
I guess all I can say about the third, that, what was back in 1982, I don't know who did that, or whatever.
Who?
Mortensen.
He's dead long as long.
I guess for that, that's way back then, and we're now in 2018.
Yeah.
And everyone is charged the same fee.
I know, but it's kinda outrageous. Where is all that money going? Being you've had buy for 28 years on $75, now it's $384 a year? Something ain't really right.
He built new ponds, built new water plants.
When?
When? I don't, water plants, but when I left, it was 10 years old. Now I was eight, so it's 18 years old. Built new ponds back then too.
That hasn't happened since 2011. What's happened since 2011?
Mortensen's been dead a long time. Been dead over 20 some years, so.
And I don't think tonight anybody can come up with how, what have been the changes. You know, some things that-
Well, they're kinda extreme.
You know, there was a day when, when not all of the expenses against the utility were actually paid by the utility. The general fund paid a lot of expenses. Well, as taxes go up, there's a balancing act. Those things that were water, wastewater related, that the general fund used to pay, well, now they're being moved over into those utility funds where they really should be. So it's a balancing where the, you know, the taxes probably didn't go down, but it didn't go up as much. But the utility bills have, have gone up, because you're allocating actual utility costs against the utility instead of letting the general fund carry those expenses. I don't know if that's all of it, but usually, you know, there's a good chance that that's the majority of it, is it's just better bookkeeping and allocating costs to where they're supposed to be.
Okay, so then, now, how are we going to, um... With the resolution now, we're passing that, we have some corrections here. So can we pass the resolution with-
Pass the resolution, what you recommend it.
And then, all these others will be taken care of individually?
Yep.
You know? Okay, so if they talk to Andy, and give them their name and, and everything like that, that'll be taken care of at a later time.
Yep, for yours specifically, take a look at that.
I guess that's what I'm asking, we don't need to cover that under the resolution.
Not under this resolution, no, we can make those adjustments later. Similar to the rest of the people who haven't had it, when we get the actuals, and we need to make adjustments, we'll do those in the spring, summer, whenever we get those quantities together. Yep.
Will I have to leave till spring or summer?
No.
No, so you gotta make sure that, and make sure that they get your name and, and address and all that stuff, so it gets taken care of, okay?
Probably early, early December, with the holidays, I'm not gonna get them coming up.
But we'll get it done before.
And the thing, big thing I think I got out of this is that we gotta make sure that the streets are passed around in the spring. You know, so that we try to cover that.
I'll let you know.
Okay. Okay. So with that, do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Rick, seconded by Josh, to approve Resolution 2018-12 for the infrastructure project. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Yes, let's have a, we're gonna take a break for five minutes, okay?
I got it. What's that?
Well, another thing is, the state, CA, and Department of Health expect to make money on the water and sewer backfilling. Now they make it, they have to make money on your water.
We have to have separation of executive pieces.
Do you think Brad's gonna be a perfect deal?
Probably not.
There's no reason you can't be. You do not need to be, if there's no comments, you just keep moving it. Yes, yes. But I don't like the building.
And was it that sack? I don't want it.
Proof is yes.
Yeah.
I would have to ask, because there is, there is- Want to say yes, but I can't guarantee that, because risk handles all the stuff. Are you able to stop it there?
What are you doing?
You guys hear all those protesters? They're very, this is my favorite. The only thing that they do is take the government, but then there's different city, like, different levels of government. And you're sitting at the municipal city hall saying, "We want you to do this."
And that should be done as part of the work restoration. Did he pause the recording so that people watching don't have to listen to it?
I don't know.
They'll, they'll do a lot of that to challenge this. Yes.
Can I get a discount? I love it. It shouldn't be. It shouldn't be. It doesn't, like, we can't wait, don't worry about it.
Yes, I think so, yeah. Okay, guys, we're gonna start now.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. The whole-
Just take a motion.
Okay, here we go, we're gonna go right now. Okay, we're talking about the, um, the excavator purchase, if you saw. Now I got everything on this stuff here. Okay. We had approved, um, the twice, we had approved for a vacuum system, you just, and we had-
Will do. For the vacuum excavator purchase in 2017, we allocated $14,000, and in 2018, there was allocated another $14,000 for a grand total of $28,000 to purchase a vacuum excavator this year. We've got the call for that that came in as, what was that, $26,117.92. At the time, one of the items that wasn't thought of was getting a hot water kit for the ditch witch, or the vacuum excavator. And what that is, it's an industrial heated pressure washer, and it's very useful for the winter months if you have to go down to get an electrical lines, natural gas lines, water sewer lines. It basically blasts hot water, pressurized hot water, and it just, like a hot knife through butter to get down to it. And previous cities I've worked for, we've had it, it was a very useful tool. And over time, it pays for itself, because you're not having to rent an excavator to get in and chop up the frozen dirt to get at at the time, the money, the resource to do that. You take that thing out, you hot blast through it, you get right down to it, you get it done. So that's, the idea is over time, you do it now, over time, you'll save costs, because you won't have to go through the, the extra stuff that you normally would have to. Very useful piece of advice.
So with that, does anybody have any questions about that?
No.
This is a state bid, so we only got to one quarter on it.
Okay, and it's also, we had a lot of this here, but this is gonna be the extra, the hot water kit is extra. So I need a motion then, to approve the, um, $26,117.92 and the $6,860.
I'll make a motion.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made by Brad, seconded by Josh, to approve that. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. Now we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions in regard to that? The minutes, the claims for payment, and the questions there, Walton and Meek, Small Cities Development Grant, or the S, pay number four pay estimate for the infrastructure project? No questions? If not, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion made by Rick, seconded by Brad, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. Okay, then, moving on to new business. We have approval of the canvas of the 2018 general elections. So congratulations to you guys on being in. And with that, you have that in front of you. I don't think there's any questions, so, there's lots of names on there though, boy. With that, I-
No, making noises are gonna end up dark.
No, I know, but I need a motion to approve the elect, or the general election ballot power.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Rick, seconded by Josh, to approve the general canvas of the 2018 general election. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. Okay. Moving on to the animal ordinance, the family good with the animal ordinance, Alvin? Go ahead.
Um, I spoke with Aaron Walton earlier today, and there is some language that he would like to amend, looking at it.
I'm not even kidding.
Just to, just to really strengthen it, get it together, um, read it over once more and say, mm, maybe you ought to think about amending some of the, a little, just a little section of the language. I'll try to talk about it here a little bit, but really, the goal is to strengthen it, to make sure it's the piece of-
Well, this has to do with the last, um, sub-division, I would call it, number three, with the, what is considered a dog or cat known to run at large. We saw some, foresaw some issues prosecuting those types of cases, and I think Aaron talked with Nick about his thoughts on how the judge would side if we were trying to prove our case with something other than either a previous conviction or infraction, or at least a previous report or complaint, a recorded complaint. So at least we have something that we can point to on paper, saying that this animal is known to run at large, so that's kind of the change of-
Makes sense.
Yeah.
So then we need to adjust, we need to-
We'll add, we'll add some language to clarify that process, so if it's ever challenged in court.
I want this, I want this ordinance done before I leave.
Yes. Well, we figured ICRs would be the best method of doing it, we just wanna get that included in the ordinance.
Okay, so we will put this on as, this'll be own business next time.
Correct.
Okay, then, um, number 16 is approval of Nick being able, the city administrator, whoever it is, but Nick, being able to join the local Lions Club.
In my previous positions as city administrator, I've always asked for permission if I was going to join a local organization on behalf-
Of the city.
Of the city. As a city administrator, I know the local Lions Club has been doing membership drives, and it would be a good organization to be a part of.
And I think if he wants to join, we should approve it.
Yep. Make a motion to approve it.
Okay, second?
Second.
Motion made by Josh, Josh, by Josh, seconded by Brad. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. Okay, now we have the, um, the delinquent assessments in front of us. Okay, now we have the delinquent assessments in front of us. That ordinance, we need to have that passed.
Resolution.
It's resolution 2008, what? Did I miss something?
Nope. Continue, sorry.
Okay, it's resolution 2018-13. And the listings are on there. And does anyone have any questions on that?
What's the statement as to what I'm...
Oh, this is probably a property that went back to someone who paid for taxes, and some of it then goes back to the state. This is the House Republican. It's a House Republican, you know, on here?
Okay, yeah. Got it. So for the state of Minnesota one, what happens is if there's delinquent utility bills on it that have been assessed prior, once it goes back to the county and the state technically owns it, but the county is the keeper of it, all special assessments get wiped, so we have to reassess.
Any other questions? If not, I need a motion to approve resolution 2018-13.
I'll make a motion.
You have a second?
Second.
Motion by Rick, second by Josh to approve resolution 2018-13. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motions carried. Now the wage adjustments. And Nick, you wanna go over that a little bit?
Yes, I met with the Personnel Committee. As is tradition for every year, to discuss wage adjustments and what they may be. For 2019, the recommendation coming out of the Personnel Committee would be a general wage adjustment to all full-time staff, 2.25%. And with an adjustment to the election judges of an increase of 21 cents to bring them to $9.86, which is the 2019 Minnesota minimum wage. And then also doing that with the lifeguard position, bringing them up to 9.86, and then the minimum wage for 2019. And then adjusting WSI and Assistant Manager accordingly by 41 cents, because that was their...
And we might wanna say that this is the same wage adjustment as 2018.
Correct.
So yeah, that's our recommendation.
Yeah?
What'd you say?
That's our recommendation.
Yeah, okay, so if there's no questions, why we should have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Rick, second by Brad to make the recommend, to do the, approve the 2018, 19 wage adjustments for this stuff. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motions carried. And with that... Okay, moving on to... Okay, we've got performance evaluation for Nick. We matched in a closed meeting prior to our regular meeting. And I have to read this and be so formal?
Yes. That is my recommendation.
I'm not going to. We recommended that you're doing a great job, and we're happy with you, and we didn't fire you, and...
Always a plus.
Could that be my other one?
Please, Denise, I didn't see you back there. No, Nick has done very well, and I'll read it. The city, the mayor and city council members evaluated city administration areas reflecting job knowledge abilities. Nicholas Johnson was ranked very, very well in the overall compliance of all categories. Nicholas Johnson was also evaluated on core competencies, including city council relationships, public relations, leadership, fiscal management, personal characteristics, and dependability, decision-making, problem-solving, communication, and organizational skills. Nicholas ranked great in the overall of all these categories.
Once again, thank you to city council, all the citizens, for giving me this opportunity to serve you. And I can continue to do a great job. If not, yeah, I deserve to be fired.
Well, I'm just, I guess I'm fine. Okay, then, moving on...
The approval of that statement.
Oh, yeah, oh, really?
Yep.
I'll make motion to approve that statement.
No wonder I had to read it. Okay, motion made by Josh, second by Brad to approve the statement I just made about the administrative performance. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motions carried. Okay, then we're moving on to, Nick, you did just speak.
All right. For my report, election day went well in Fairfax. Everything flowed pretty darn smooth and steady throughout the day. There was only a few times we really had any lulls. And we actually noted that, the election judges and I, and all of a sudden we go, man, it's really quiet in here. There's nobody here. That only happened a few times. A little nice reprieve, it didn't last too terribly long. But I wanna thank all my election judges that helped out. Great group, they did a good job, did their roles well. And looking forward in the next couple of years when we do this all again for another successful round on it. We've done a preliminary look at the cost build-out for the Franklin, City of Franklin Extension of Natural Gas from the City of Fairfax. Project is estimated in that $2.1 million range. That's to run it from our existing system west along 19 and then build out the entire system in Franklin. These are preliminary cost figures, working with our new natural gas engineers, Ellis Consulting. And that's the all-inclusive cost. So that includes construction, and actually includes an allotment for converting over propane to natural gas systems, and that as well, to just to promote conversion, and then as well as bond issuing costs, legal fees, all of that is included in there. Next step is, I'll start working with Shannon Sweeney, our financial advisor, just to kind of do some rough back of the napkin calculations, keep the cost really low for the city at this point as we look at preliminary feasibility. If those start to come back and produce consumer rates for the City of Franklin that look really promising, then I'll come back to camp, council will do more of a presentation, get authorization to move forward with more of a deep dive and really grinding down on the numbers. And once we have that, we can go ahead and approach the City of Franklin to see if they'd be interested in that. The goal would be to have something, you know, more cost-effective than propane or electric as they have now, because they don't have a natural gas system, but something that would be able to cash flow for the City of Fairfax as well, finding that sweet spot in there. So that's the whole. Joel and I have been working with Compass. They're the purchasing group that we belong to for our electric supplier. Us and a handful of other cities are part of that. On a potential new revenue stream for the electric fund. As a municipal electric supplier, we have a very good chance of being, to apply for this. It's called Attachment O because that's the form you fill out. It's something that's been available, but we haven't been taking advantage of. But Compass has taken a spearhead role in getting their organization set up for it, and helping the member cities get set up with that as well. So we, Joel and I met with them last week. They said, it looks like we're gonna have a really good chance of being eligible for this. And their kind of estimates, really rough estimates, at what the city may get back from this. It's a reimbursement for work that is done on the transmission line end of things. They're figuring, they've looked at other cities with similar setups like Fairfax. They're estimating between $30,000 and $60,000 a year that we could get reimbursement for that we're not getting right now, which would be great.
But there's a cost involved as far as getting on?
There's a cost involved in getting on board. The group that they're working with is MRS, and they're working, they're a well-known group that does this as their, in their industry, working and getting Compass set up, member city set up. It costs roughly $50,000 to do, but if you're talking about getting $30,000 to $60,000 per year back, that's a one- to two-year turnaround, return on investment. It just makes a whole lot of sense to pursue. So I gave them authorization to start producing, pursuing the very preliminary paperwork, not the $50,000 end of things, but what Compass needs to do to get ready for the group to come in to do the $50,000. And then, once they get that together, Compass will come in, do a presentation on what the...
To the council.
To the council, and council will give authorization, yep, pull the trigger on it for that. So that's really good to hear, that we could potentially be getting between $30,000 and $60,000 at the completion of this, per year. Economic Development Authority has been working hard on the grocery store project. Over the last month, they've met several times to gather information, do research, make contacts towards reopening a grocery store in town. A lot of work has been put in by all the members of that, I wanna thank them. And we've had citizens that have been very involved as well. So it's been a really good project so far. EDA has put together a survey that should be going out next week that'll go to the residents of Fairfax, Gibbon, Franklin, Hector, and the associated rural routes with those to get more feedback from what we would call the trade area of the former Maynard's, just to get those puzzle pieces all together. The goal is to implement the right solution to fit Fairfax's needs. So we're not just trying to go pie in the sky, shoot for the stars. We want something that's gonna address the needs and be successful in our community, because we don't want five, six years down the road, we go way too big or large, and then it just ends up failing. We want something that's gonna work for us. So still a lot of work to do on their end, but they're driving forward with it pretty well. The EDA is also working on another project to help our existing businesses. The project concept involves having in-depth conversations with our business community and asking, because many of them are small businesses, they don't necessarily have those really full staff structures to do some of the other things. So we wanted to talk to them and see if there are any commonalities between business owners that the EDA could help coordinate and maybe cost participate in to help businesses with their various things they do. Some of the, just the ones the EDA threw out there, the two top ones that kind of threw out there was, is there, is a financial advisor something that may be worthwhile looking into? Not an accountant that does the book, but a financial advisor that will look at the business plan, look at a budget. Maybe there are better ways to reallocate how you're using money to produce better results, to help the business do a whole lot better. A social media expert, if someone's not savvy in it, is there enough businesses that would get together that would warrant hiring on, not as a city employee, but hiring consultant to help with social media work that they could all cost participate in with the EDA to keep it nice and cost-effective, but then it drives more of those online sales practices? Just two examples, working on those, but seeing if we can do something like that to help out our local businesses. The final thing I have is, I wanna start a discussion that we may end up concluding, well, if we go forward with it, end up concluding at December meeting. End September, we approved a levy, and that included a $22,498 increase in the levy from this year. So this year it's at $500,000. Next year was proposed to be at $500,200, $500,022.98. There. Let's get that straight, I'm a little too fast here. And that was purely because of the bond that was issued for the 2018 street project. That was the debt associated with that street project. That's the only reason it increased. We have a bond on the books, the 2011 A bond, and that was the bond associated with the city hall renovation and the library. That currently has $310,000 left on it. One thing I want to look at, we're paying about 3.4% on that 2011 bond. As we've seen in the financial reports, the electric fund is doing, is very healthy. I would like to recommend that we look at paying off the 2011 bond, which is roughly $40,000 a year in property tax payments. That would allow us to drop the final levy back to the $500,000 mark and keep taxes flat for the next year rather than having to raise them. Plus, we also pay off that bond. That would save a little over $50,000 interest over the remaining life of it. And I believe that's a lot better than taking that money, putting it into an investment account, maybe getting 2% on it, when we're still paying 3.4% on the bond itself. A lot of advantages to do this, and we're not draining the electric fund to do this. We're simply utilizing those good, healthy cash flows to help restructure some of our debt. So that's something I've been thinking on. It seems like a pretty good idea. Makes sense. Any questions from council on that?
They can, put it in our packet, and it's something we should discuss on the next.
Okay, makes sense. Then we go on to the other part where I talk a bunch. It's the financial reports from October 2018. This month was a pretty uneventful month across all the funds as far as expenses go. Normal and expected, and some didn't have many expenses at all, really. Storm sewer certainly didn't. No, I don't wanna do that. Sorry about that. General fund revenues, ambulance revenues are below, looking to be below target. I keep track of those month to month. I'm gonna guess by year-end, unless there's a whole slew of people who get hurt and call for ambulances, we're probably gonna be $11,000 short. I've adjusted for that in the 2019 budget, by the way, so it's not, we won't see that repeat. Garbage revenues are on target. Community center rent is above target. I'm anticipating about roughly $2,000 above budgeted amounts for that. Fire call revenues are above target. And that was something that started coming in this year, is that fire calls in town, the fire call revenue would be turned back to the city on that. So we're now getting that where we didn't before, so I'm anticipating about $4,000 in revenue off of that that we could probably see from year to year. On the water fund expenses side of things, again, normal, expected. Water sales are looking below target by about $5,000. I'm going to estimate that I have corrected for in the 2019 budget as well. In the wastewater fund, again, normal, expected expenses. Wastewater fund revenues are looking to be stable, on track for budgeted amounts. So that's good. Storm sewer fund, normal expenses, expected very few expenses this month out of there. And storm sewer sales are on target for budgeted amounts. In the electric fund side of things, normal, expected, with some notes. Training is over budget for the, over budget for the year, but we anticipated that, if that makes sense. We still have training that we're doing with some of our public work staff to get them all licensed. So we do have some training overruns for that, but we want them licensed. We need to get them up to speed. So it was anticipated, but 2018 budget didn't reflect it. But it's, it's still a good, a good investment. On the electric fund revenues end of things, electric sales are coming in above target for budgeted amounts. At this point, I'm estimating revenues will be $50,000 on sales, above our targets. On the natural gas end of things, normal, expected. A bond payment was made this month, and we did have some CRC unit upgrades. They upgraded their dryer unit to a very powerful unit that does about $10,000 to $12,000 bushels of corn an hour. I think just really cranked it up. And they kicked on, I think it was a few weeks ago, they did kick that unit on, and we certainly saw it out at the TBS station when that started sucking natural gas. But we had plenty for the rest of the system, don't worry. Well, we certainly saw the needle go, oop, there it goes. But the CRC unit upgrade costs, our costs associated with that, that'll be reimbursed by CRC, and they are aware of that. On the natural gas fund revenues end of things, natural gas sales are coming in above target at this point. We gotta see how November and December do, because that's some of our highest usages this month. But right now, I'm looking at $100,000 in natural gas sales above what the targeted amounts were for 2018. But we'll see what happens. If it's a really warm November, December, that's gonna change. If it's a really even colder November and December, that could go up more. So we'll keep track of those. On the liquor fund expenditures are coming in on budget. However, liquor fund sales are coming in below budget. That's kind of been the theme for the last six months in these reports. And then for the investments and cash balances, have those listed there. Overall, in the total, it went up. We did see the property tax payments come in on the general fund. That's why that crept up. And then the rest of the utilities just kind of crept up on their own, due to sales. Any questions on any of those figures? If not, we go to the pretty graph section. All right, now I gotta get this out of the way. I don't know why this keeps popping up. Scott, you wanna hit the lights so we can see that a little better? Thank you. There we go. These are the water revenues for the year up through October. I did want, add one in extra line, that's far right after December. It's the average for the year thus far. So you can kind of get an idea of where the revenues have been from year to year to year on an average basis than trying to track all the different months and eyeball it, how is it doing so? So far, 2018 is doing fairly well in the water revenues as compared to previous years. Similar story for wastewater. Month to month to month, and with the average at the end there, doing as well or better than previous years. Storm sewer, same story. Electric revenues. Again, clarification on this one, with the average, you see a decrease over time. Remember, back in 2016 is when the tile... Remember back in 2016 is when the tile plant closed down and they were a large electric user for the City of Fairfax. So that's where you see those 15 to 16 to 17 drops in there, but it looks like we've got a little bit of an increase over 17 so far in 18. Natural gas revenues, again, same story. 17 was much higher because we had a very cold November, December, and we had a whole ton of drying that happened last November. And frontier bar total sales per month. Any questions on any of that? If not, it's another exciting addition of the financial reports.
Yes, because you might take a nap. Because you're, you're up next.
I am?
Yeah, because our Circumstances Streets is not here.
I do have a report from him.
Okay, can you do us that?
I can do that on behalf of Joel. He is out at Compass, he's out at Compass Works Options, he's our primary delegate to the Compass Board, and they're doing a strategic session, uh, two-day strategic session there. So they've been working on winterizing parks and pools, cleaning up the lawnmower equipment and getting that all put away, and simultaneously getting the snow plow equipment ready to go. Um, they've been sweeping streets, trying to keep up with the leaves falling, keeping that all taken care of. As, uh, Andy had talked about, uh, street project asphalt is down, mailboxes are up along with street signs, about two and a half blocks will stay gravel with no curb, along with alleys uptown until next year. They're still, uh, we're going to be trimming trees on the north end of town the week of Thanksgiving. Still waiting to hear back on Lions Park Fence from Valley Fence to install that, still hasn't been done yet. Uh, the new prop cap that was approved should be here the week of November 26th, and, uh, the vac excavator should be here, uh, the week of the next council meeting. That was Joel's report.
The last month in October, it was a little bit quieter than the month before, we had 128 different calls. And I did call about our speed signs, and they said they're still under warranty until November 16th. So they are replacing, they said, uh, the displays will be here like next week, we're hoping, so it'll be replaced.
Okay.
I got hardly anything else. We're almost, like, everybody in town almost had gotten their head license, so there's only like three or four that didn't, so... Any questions?
Nope.
Are you sure?
Any questions, anybody? No? Disney, here.
So since last time, uh, I saw you guys, we did quite a few promotions. Uh, we did a 90's party and a Halloween party, um, as well as the fireman's raffle. Uh, something that is new is we're doing the silver coin promotion, which is nine ounce tap, green, premium, rainbow premium for any silver coin. I knew going into it that that was gonna be kind of an iffy thing, we were either gonna make a lot of money or lose a lot of money. Thank goodness it wasn't the latter. We actually doubled our Monday sales by running that promotion. So that was actually a really good move on our part. I also went to an MMBA conference where I learned more than I could probably ever share with anyone. So that was a really important thing, I think, for me to do. I got to talk to other liquor store managers, people in legislation, people that worked with all the thing, who has helped city, um, city employees navigate through purchasing and pricing and things like that, so I've learned a lot. In the last two months, our lunch hours have increased a lot. Um, the construction workers, that's been huge on that part for us. Um, it doesn't really show up on our numbers, I'm not sure why, but we definitely probably doubled our lunch hour cough, our income right now. Um, I also took it upon myself to do an audit of our liquor, beer and wine costs for sale price. Um, and I found that there were some discrepancies that we needed to fix, so I just did the entire thing at once. Um, so I'm hoping that that will show on our numbers in the next couple of months, because there were some that, you know, there's some were selling at cost, there's some were selling below cost, there's some were selling for double the cost. Um, so doing that, I think, will hopefully help bring us back levels. Any questions?
Thank you. Okay, we have the building permit list in front of us, committee meeting, we saw the EDA's been really busy meeting. Smolcy's development program, kind of moving on then, are there any council member individual items that anybody would like to bring up? No? Okay, then, um, Nick.
2019 budget stuff. This time, um, don't have a lot of changes to general enterprise funds. They're still tracking very stable as we get through November for next, we can, uh, next month in December, we'll have any final tweaks in that. What I really would like to focus on for this part of it tonight is I handed out the project list. I self-eliminated some projects that didn't make sense, cleaned it up, got it into a letter-size format this time. And, um, so I'm looking for direction, looking through this, really hammering down on the ones we want to pursue and move forward with. If we, uh, but with this, a lot of this, especially the parks work, will be dependent on grant, uh, success in getting grants with that. So when we look at this, it would be good to assume that we would get the grants, but to keep in mind when we get next year, if for some reason we don't get the grants, we have to keep in mind that we're gonna need to be flexible to come back and say, well, we had planned to do all this stuff, but if we didn't get any of the grant funding, worst-case scenario, none of the grant funding, we're gonna have to take a look at the project list once again to make sure it restructures and refits with the funding that is available to us.
You know what I think, and I mentioned it before, you know what I think we ought to do at our next meeting? I think we need to go through here, I mean, I'm not, there's some things here I need to cross off. You know?
Most of, you know, if we get the grant money...
If we get the grant money, that's different.
It's all fine, right.
Right, but I guess it would definitely be, you know, and exactly what he said, if the grant money doesn't come, then you're gonna have to sit down and restructure what you, what you want to do. So this isn't set, this is not set in stone.
Right.
Definitely not set in stone.
My, yeah, would ask, let's give a lot of thought to this, see, not see, cross out, maybe there's a project you want to think about adding, so we'll get that all tallying in. And if you can get that to me individually, get me your list back to me, then I can start putting that together for the December meeting, and we can kind of get that leg up when we start talking about it, rather than doing it now.
I think we need to prioritize the things that we really, really want to get done.
Yeah.
Okay? And some of these other things are, you know, it's fine, even if you get money, we might not wanna, might wanna do it, we might not wanna do it. So I think exactly what Nick said. Do you want us to look at this and give it back to him? What we think, okay?
You?
Everybody agree to that? Okay. Anything else?
That's all I have for that, otherwise, general fund is still sitting well with everything that has been budgeted before, enterprise funds are still sitting well for revenue expenses. I can keep track over the next months and tighten it down where we can tighten it down on, and then we'll, I'll add my own recommendations for the next council meeting, but all, it's sitting well right now. Just gotta get the projects.
Anything else, anybody? Yes, Jim?
Uh, RS Fiber, I seen once, I don't know where it was, they just go willy-nilly across somebody else's property to put somebody's hookup in. Well now, just last week or whenever, that vacant lot you got up there, I seen them go across, go across that to that next house there. You know, just willy-nilly across, uh, somebody else's property.
Technically, they can't do that.
They can't do that?
They do the same thing.
I mean, that was my lot, I, I was gonna dig something, I wasn't, I wouldn't bother hitting it, you know, not hitting it, I'd care at all, actually.
My recommendation for that is call RS Fiber, because it's not RS Fiber that's doing it, they contracted, they contracted that work out.
It's RS Fiber responsibility, though.
It's their responsibility, but it's not their...
I just bring it up, yep.
And I've gotten a lot of people who've said the same thing.
No, I've got seen a lot of, they went across, you know, they should stay in the public area, but they knocked down the alley line or the electrical line there and went straight into the yard, not across a big vacant lot to the north side of that next house.
If you see that, call RS Fiber and tell them where it's happening, because they want to know that, because they don't want their, their contractors doing anything they shouldn't. I've got reports that, you know, they leave them, they're still laid out in the ground, they're up in the trees.
Why don't you call RS Fiber on behalf of his, probably get something done quicker than he would get it done.
I can do that, if you can give me the, uh...
What's that?
If you can tell me where that vacant lot is specifically.
I told him, he should call and probably get it done quicker than you would.
Well, it's too late, now I'll give it, you know.
They're not supposed to go on private property.
They could make it aware of it, so...
They might force them to change it. What lot was that?
Uh, across from, you know, the lane, right? Across from the lane up there.
Oh, okay, the one that we...
I think that the city owns it, don't they?
Yeah.
Oh.
The lot that we had...
The tour that I was on.
Yeah, and that corner lot.
Is the city owning it?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's easy.
I think give them a call, Nick, so that, you know, even if you can't do anything about it now, at least they're aware of it, so they talk to their people not to do that.
They shouldn't be running cables across.
I mean, naturally, they, for sure, there's a root, but...
It wasn't, that's not proper there.
They had a lot fit.
That's not right away.
Those tarrows lies.
Okay, anything else? If not, I'm gonna ask for motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
In a second.
One second.
Motion made by Rick, seconded by Brad, adjourned, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. This is our...